Good evening and welcome to the town meeting of Belgrade for the planning board. It's September 21st, it is 6:03. And we're gonna start by having a wall call. Tonight we have...
Richard Baker.
Richard Baker.
Peter Thaddeus.
Sarah Langgett.
Craig O'Zinner.
Tom Rasmussen, Department of Enforcement Officer.
And from the public, can you guys please introduce yourselves?
Celine Richards.
Kevin DuBois.
Our secretary.
Yeah, I should start by letting you guys know that we'll do the wall call because our secretary looks at the video and take the minutes that way. So, thank you so much. So, let's start with a new business and the first order of business today will be the application of Jordan and Celine Richards. And this is located in 66 Spalding Point Road, map 46 lot 18. The purpose is a shoreline zone permit that will remove seasonal cabin and build a year-round three-bedroom home. Existence source, disposal system type and capacity is a pump system, 150 tanks, and which have a leach field. Present numbers of bedrooms is two and bedrooms to be added on this application will be one. When did you purchase the property within the shoreline zone? It happened in April 20th of 2014, which is the after of the November 6th, 18, 2018, doesn't apply. Total of the lot area is a quarter acres. The lot area within the shoreline zone is half an acre. Square footage on vegetated surface within shoreline zone, including all structures, driveways, parking, walkways, and pires is 740.
Did you see that?
Yep.
Lot number seven.
Yes.
It's a quarter acre, so the lot area in the shoreline can be half acre, must be half of the quarter.
That's what my understanding would be that the amount of shoreline, lot area in the shoreline zone within 250 feet of the acre is half of the full lot area?
Yeah.
It's higher than...
That's the hundred feet, I think, is what they were estimating.
A quarter acre, so more than a hundred feet, all of this will show right now.
So it'll be a quarter acre too?
Yes.
But is it just backwards? The total area is half an acre?
No.
Or both are a quarter acre?
You guys know what was filled in there?
Say again.
You know why that was filled in there?
On the application?
Yeah. Question seven.
Question seven?
There was a lot area within the shoreline zone.
Based on the...
Yeah, saying that's...
So, it'd be a quarter acre, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we have a quarter, we still want a quarter.
Working at...
It's no big deal, we just get it right on when we're done.
Yep.
Looking at the site and it looks like the property, at least to the Spalding Point Road, is approximately 214 feet or something like that to the road itself. So, do you own the only two roads?
Yes. It is a quarter, it's just no behinding quarter, so.
Okay.
We'll just adjust that as we go.
Okay.
Thank you. So, we stop at number nine. What is the total area of clear openings of wooded vegetation is 10,000 square feet? Total number of structures on the lot is two. And site plan to scale have been accompanied with our application. Present structure square footage, it says to look at the attachment documentation, and so we have a sheet where it says that the the existing camp is 439 square feet, the porch is 108, the deck is 64 and shed is 96 square feet. And then what is proposed is 1,008 square feet warehouse, garage will be 576 feet, the deck will be 144 square feet, and the shed will be 96 square feet. With that, I open the floor for the board to make comments. I think we already fixed the number seven, the lot area within the shoreline zone will be a quarter acre.
We have the... On the application, have they filled it?
Yes.
So, question the utility falls when the project, the utility line, so that the garage, 15 feet. No closer than 15 feet, I guess. The... Do we know what the... how far the proposed garage moving, not that it's from the top lines?
He's got that's from CMP, he's gonna do the setback as he's trying to get that as far as the can't program water.
Yeah.
And the notes here, yes, it says 15 feet from the power line.
So the line that is closest to the garage is 15 feet, then it just increases and it gets a little far.
Oh. Look, from the corner there, it's 15 feet, is that there?
Yes.
And the other side probably go 20, 20 feet, I'm guessing. Yeah, 150, right?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, so the, okay, alright.
Thank you.
That's good.
I've got some questions to...
Mr. Baker?
Actually, some of them, some of my earlier questions were probably answered with the... I didn't have the drawing as a new structure. I wanted to make sure that anything within 75 feet or beyond, the structure beyond 25 feet has a height of no more than 25 feet of height.
Correct.
And the old structure is the case. And then I didn't have any, see any dimensions of the old structures specifically, and I asked that question. When a structure is going down, you build, it has to meet the setback requirement to the greatest practical extent. And that structure is grandfathered as a set. Question whether a, when moving back to the greatest practical extent, we talked about this before, that the structure has to be an existing structure, what was its size of the existing structure needs to be quite to the greatest practical extent for setback. Then when you do that, you then look at what more can I expand without going closer to the water? And from my view of the drawing, it looks like the house, new houses is deeper in depth than the original camp. So, I question whether that, that essentially is allowing the existing structure to be built plus being built closer to the water because the new structure is deeper in depth. So I don't know, put this right, I question more, I don't believe that we can allow the new structure to be deeper in depth than the old structure once you determine what the setback requirement is to the greatest practical extent. The other thing is I see there's a garage, and I know your husband mentioned that last time, that he needs a garage, and I can understand that. When we're looking at the greatest practical extent, can we consider that garage in terms of greatest practical extent that this is needed on a practical basis or whatever, therefore the structure, if this same application was being presented without a garage, I'd say that the new house needs to be where the
Garage is.
Depth of the garage.
Yeah.
And I guess the question is, can we look at the garage as we evaluate, taking the approach that the garage is necessary, therefore the greatest practical extent for the new house is where it's being proposed, and that the garage prevents the new house from being setbacked further because he needs a garage.
And I think we, don't we have provisions for handicap?
We do.
To do what you just said.
Well...
I wish I had, I wish I had find it in the ordinance.
My thinking along this line is if we chose to take a different approach, that the house needs to go back by the garage, we'd be into you know, trying to think of the right word, but basically preventing someone from having a necessary handicap provision, and we wouldn't win on that basis that we did. So, initially I was gonna come here saying, I don't think you can permit the garage, we need to go to the Board of Appeals. But at the same time, the garage appears is gonna be 100 feet back. And if that's the case, wouldn't we go under the Board of Appeals for variance because it's, the garage is conforming? So, anyway, I've changed my mind and feel that we can consider the garage towards meeting the, the house meeting greatest practical extent. But I am concerned about the, the new house being deeper, if you will, larger toward the water than what the old structure was. So anyway, that, that's one of my concerns. Let's see, is the new deck, any proposed deck, any deeper in terms of, not width, but distance, I would say the depth of it.
Shallower.
Pardon me?
It's shallower, his old deck is 7 feet deep.
Okay.
His new one is 60.
Okay, alright. Okay, and I guess my thought is if we threw this application and the old structures required is permitted, I think we should have a requirement that the existing area underneath the old camp be revegetated. We should probably do that. And size of the shed. I just wanna make sure what we permit, something we're not permitting, and I don't think we would be permitting more than 1,000 square feet within 75 feet of the water. And my looking at it is I don't think we would be. So the shed, oh, I guess the square footage of the shed is already on the application.
96 square feet.
And the amount of the house within 75 feet of the water and the shed, I don't think comes close to 1,000 square feet. Anyway, so my main concern is whether we can allow the the new structure to be deeper in depth than the old structure once it's meant to setback to the greatest practical extent. I think it can be, we can allow wider structure, but I don't think we can permit a deeper structure. In depth, that was all in the court, we'll need the contractor number, that would be a condition. And I thought you already got it, okay, alright, so we'll have to add that to the application.
How close are you to property lines on each side?
10 feet.
You're at 10 feet.
Can you help us by including the original dimensions on the camp, the width and length of it?
I've got that here. Your width is 31 and the depth, including the deck, is 25.
You said 25?
Yeah, that's including the deck. The structure itself is 18, the deck is 7.
So, let me, let me go back and ask this while we are, the new house, the 28 is the, the 28 will be the width and 36 will be the depth. Yes.
I'm sorry, 33 wide.
33 wide.
And 25 feet deep. Alright.
And then the new one's what, 28 feet deep?
The new one is 36 deep.
No, it's width as well. It's great for weight.
It is shorter on the width that is on the depth, that's why I said that the width will be 28, isn't it?
Yeah. I would agree with you.
I'm looking at that right there.
It's, yeah, 28 feet wide and 36 deep.
This is like this for lakes?
Well, it's actually a lot deeper than what the old structure was.
Yeah, but again, well, that's 75 feet, way under your front over.
So, me, looking at this, you have the product form like that.
But it's 25 feet, uh, feet including the deck.
The deck right there, right?
How, how deep was the deck?
Only 7 feet.
Which one is the width?
So, 45 including the deck.
I'm looking at this print right here, the length is where the length of that now?
Yeah. Um, lake is where the living room and dining room is, that wall.
So it will help me to understand the dimensions of the porch, the dimensions of the deck, and the shed that are existing.
So the dimensions of the deck would be 6 feet in depth and 26 or 24 feet.
24 wide, 24s.
That's the existing one?
No, that's for the progress line.
So they, I need the dimensions of the existing one.
7 by 14.
14 being?
To the task for... 16, 7 by 16.
7 by 16, and 7 is the deck.
That sound right to you?
Yes, that is your deck, yep.
Okay, that's the deck. Now the porch, I, I have a hard time figuring out, sorry about this. How the porch is attached here? Through the, is the porch, what you're calling the porch is the...
It's enclosed.
It's enclosed.
Part of the door.
It's part of the door.
Yeah.
Okay. So then, the camp, the widest, the widest points of the camp are from the west, the most let's say east-west direction, actually north, it's almost north-south. So, it will be 31 feet wide because there, there's a section in the front of the old camp that is narrower towards the lake. But counting the farthest wall into possibly one property line to the other will be about 31 feet wide. This is one here. And then the depth of the camp is starting from behind the deck all the way to the back. So that point, that 27 is including the 7 feet of depth of the deck.
Yes, so essentially, we need that number from the front of the deck to the very back of the house.
The deck.
To the very back of the house.
See, this is, it was originally 25 feet, 25, that's what they showed.
And how close was it to the lake? And how far away from the lake is the proposed?
The existing? Help me out here, what are you, 15 feet from the lake?
That sounds about right, but I didn't...
And the new one's gonna be setback to the next 15.
So we're giving a lot of, lot of land there.
Yeah, he was trying to put it back to 100, you know, power line stopping. But his intentions are exactly what the ordinance says. It's not possible.
Yeah, so with the, with the setback on the, on the proposed structure, 55 things?
60.
60?
And you guys are matched on, from side to side to property lines.
You know, for back to the lake, the new property?
I think somewhere around. It's between 55 and 60.
Yeah, I wanna say it was 60, I'm not sure if that included the deck or not. Yeah, so you got a good...
So, we're considering the old structure versus the new structure. The big deal here will be the depth. So we have to count from the front of the porch to the back of the, of the home or the camp. And we're talking for the 16 camp, the depth is 25 feet. Are we all agreeing with that? Alright, so then the new structure from the front of the deck to the back of the new home will be 28, 28 feet plus 6. It will be 34.
30, 36, 36. 28 is the width.
Nevermind, you're right. Thank you. That would be 42 versus 25. We don't get a...
Sure. You know, my thinking is...
17 feet or... 17 feet.
But we can't go any wider. So for a handicapped home, it doesn't make any, it's not very practical to have you know, an 18 by 28 house. You know, it's, it really struggled, it's a practical thing because we're gaining space with letting them move it back. We're getting a lot of space where...
And elevation, but the lot is sloped, so you're getting a lot higher away from the water.
So we're gaining a lot as a town, getting them away from the water. And this practical thing that you keep bringing up, I really struggle with it.
We all do, that's correct.
I really struggle with the whole well, meaning of the whole thing and how you determine that. And I don't know, and, and that's, I think, as moved back is practically as far as practical as there are.
I understand what you're saying, at the same time, I think that...
If they have no way to go sideways, if they have space to go sideways, they're not understanding your argument. But they have no space to go sideways.
That's the other thing, a thought I have, and I'm not trying to sound, trying to come across as being negative, I understand exactly kind of very well. But the idea of the larger house and meaning that being greatest practical extent or whatever is that the existing camp has two bedrooms there, and we're approving a third bedroom. And just in terms of size, increasing on the size versus what was there before. The old house camp, the existing camp, is grandfathered where it is. The ordinance is written that that, once you tear it down, it's damaged or destroyed, I mean, 50%. You have to come and find you of the ordinance if you were building it today. So, I understand where Craig is coming from, but I also think we need to go by what the ordinance says.
Well, doesn't the sport say, doesn't you want to say like 9,000 square feet beyond 50 feet?
Yeah, but it, it comes down to what I said before, the grandfather, the existing camp is grandfathered where it is. Once you tear it down, you kind of lost your grandfather, and so to speak. Your grandfather for what you had in terms of moving that back to the greatest practical extent. You're not grandfathered for expansion. If you can make an expansion, the additional expansion has to meet the standard of the ordinance, so to speak, so you're not making that.
Well, they're not being grandfathered for the expansion because the expansion is written right in our ordinance.
Right, are you suggesting that this doesn't meet the ordinance, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that...
Because it's 1,000 square feet, you don't...
Bigger than the old structure, so that when the old structure is removed and you look at, moving that to the greatest practical extent, you get to build what you had. Right, anything bigger than that has to meet the standard of the ordinance in terms of setback.
Now, Mr. Baker, something that will help me in placing an opinion here. I could, I know in the ordinance, there's a clip and a portion that address a situation of an elder or a person with disability on, and how this is gonna weigh.
That's actually in state law, and our ordinance doesn't give that provision, it's not specifically worded in the ordinance.
Do you, have been to know the state law, not more?
If you look up handicap accessibility, there's actually a provision for accessible access in the shoreline zone. I can't read it off word for word, it's been 12 years since I've dealt with that. Uh, I can't read it off word for word, it's been twelve years since I've dealt with that provision.
So what, what that provision allows us to do, do allow us to?
Provide, to provide a structure, granting access to the, uh. It allows for a structure to gain access to the main structure, the camp or house or whatever. And so if you couldn't make a setback to put up a, and in this case here, we're talking about a garage. I'm assuming to say, you know, my thinking is that we could argue that the garage is necessary for access to the structure for misdelivered. I'm not arguing that.
So then, then I guess the argument that I hear is that the structure needs to be certain, uh, dimensions. Because Mr. Richard, Richard end up in a wheelchair. If the house is too small, it's gonna constrain his mobility anyways, inside, he will be trapped inside house. So, um, I just cannot measure that, I cannot weigh, we, one way or the other, going from a thirty-one times, uh, twenty-five to a forty-two times twenty-eight with. I have, especially when we're talking about the depth going up to forty-two. Uh, from twenty-five, we're having a seventeen feet difference there. So. My own room, the old structure used to be, or is about twenty-five by twenty-five. And I don't know how small quarters that is. On, on, on first.
That's not feasible for handicap, but I have a question.
Sure.
If there was a vacant lot, and it was a deeded lot, and it's vacant with nothing on there, we could permit it. Correct?
Uh.
So you're just hung up on the.
We could, but we couldn't from there, because if it were a vacant lot, the new structure would have to be set back a hundred feet from the water.
No, not if it was deeded as a buildable lot, I mean, if it was always deeded as a buildable lot, wouldn't we have to grandfather?
They'd have to get a variance. To build less than a hundred feet from the water, they have to go to the Board of Appeals. We would have to deny. If, if you're saying you got a lot and somebody, uh, wants to build it seventy-five feet because they can't get back any further.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that we wouldn't be able to permit that, we can only permit what the standard is in the ordinance. And they'd have to go to the Board of Appeals, and that may be a, a variable, or they may even get a variance probably should put if they could meet the other standards in the ordinance. Uh, to build on that lot, but we couldn't, we couldn't issue a permit for a new structure at seventy-five feet from the lake until they get variance.
Even when the power line's here?
Even with the power line. Uh, it could be argued, uh, well, I don't know how much space is behind it, but if it's a vacant lot. Um. The power went, prevented them from getting, or the power line went through the middle of the property. Could argue that the new structure needs to be set back on the other side of the power line, I'm not suggesting that.
They don't have face, there's a second.
But anyway, uh.
So then, you know, I've never been in this ground before. Uh, I, I cannot wait how the state law or Disability Act, how that will shut, shelter this, this petition, I cannot wait that, or actually, I don't think working with that. And, uh, and same thing. We are in a choke and keeping, because we have a, a rule, we have a choke on, on accepting the new structure being added an extra depth of seventeen feet. Would that be then, do we wrap up this application and go to the Board of Appeals with it?
Uh, we would have to deny it. It's, we can't just send it to the board or suggest to go to the Board of Appeals. Cause the Board of Appeals has to have a decision of which they're, uh. Essentially appealing for.
I, uh, I honestly, you know. I don't wanna infringe on your rights to be able to do this, because you have a situation with, um, your husband or they have a. So I don't know enough about that law, we actually, we don't know enough about what that would cover to allow this. I, I can, we don't, I don't have the tools, so myself, I don't have the tools to give you that opinion.
Uh, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can we table this application and get a hold of our lawyer? And ask our lawyer, town's lawyer, what the situation is with handicap? And we're already gaining all that space, can we ask that town lawyer? Uh. The time limit on this?
I'm not opposed to table it, that if the board would like.
Yeah.
I can put together a draft letter to the, the co of the attorney.
Sure.
Listing out the issue.
Sure.
And, uh, asking him whether my point of view is correct. Whether the, there's another way of looking at it, yeah, and, uh.
Yeah, why do we?
I, I personally, I'm not trying to cause you problems, uh, I understand what, what you, you.
Rather than trying to lead the attorney, because this is the way the questions work, everybody tries to lead the attorney into an answer. Just ask if we can do it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I.
Rather than trying to throw your, your input into it, just ask if we can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than trying to lead him into your answer.
I won't, I won't do that, I will.
Alright.
Uh, but.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to look at it before you.
Well, that's the point I was gonna bring up next, the board is, oh, would look at that before it was forwarded. What this will do for you or not do for you is it'll delay the board's decision for at least for two board meeting periods, because we'd have to approve the letter to send. And then the attorney would, hopefully we get a reply back within two weeks, so that puts you back a month.
On today, and, and you understand that we're trying to do the right thing, I, I understand. We wanna honor your rights and, but also we wanna be in compliance with the ordinance.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, and I think that would be the best, uh, unless you're at our various times potential.
No, no.
If you could go sideways, then I'd say, well, let's work with that. Um, or you're right at your limit, so sideways.
Yeah.
Um, so I think this is your only option, and we need clarification, you know, I would, as a board member, would like that clarification, so we know.
Understand, though.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we table their pending a letter to the town attorney with, uh, uh, speaking input from him as to, uh, what. Uh, the. Question, whether this, this application is, uh, approvable whether they were.
I'm sorry.
Okay, the question, I'm sorry, the motion is no place for a question. Yeah. But if what you're. Consider, the garage is, you're considering an expansion, and that would be considered not allowable.
No, the garage, it's a necessity.
The garage is, I think we're all in agreement, we approved the garage.
The garage, yeah.
It's all part of, yeah, just expanding. And, and the structure is being, I mean, I agree that, that, uh, the structure as far as the setback, uh, we'll say the, the distance on the back side. We're not in disagreement on that, the, the question of disagreement is whether the old structure can actually be expanded such that the new structure is closer to the water than what the old structure itself would, would hit there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, so the, 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 the old structure used to be about twenty-five feet in deep, and now it's gonna be forty-two. And the, the reason behind it is that we, in order to allow the occupancy of a handicap person not to be trapped inside his own new home, that, it has to be that much bigger, I don't know how to judge that. And, and, uh, under, uh, acts alone of the state, you guys are entitled to, to, uh, uh, certain rights. So I, I can, we can, I don't have the ability to judge that, I think our lawyers will be able to win. Alright.
What I will say in the letter is the applicant is proposing to do this. Do you believe that is, uh, allowable, can they, can the board for you?
And with the, uh, garage, we've already accepted the garage as a necessity.
Hmm. We all, I think we all agree on that. Are we?
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm, I'm looking, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Trying to find them.
So we had a motion and a second, should we vote?
Sure, yeah.
And, uh, we voted tonight, because you're, you're part of the five time.
Yeah, alright, yes.
So Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Akar?
Yes.
Mrs. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And so I will, I would guess as five in favor of tabling this, uh, application with the concept of sending questions to a lawyer and none of purpose. So I think you hear from uh, Hans, um, when do we own the deck again? Maybe we about a month?
Well, we need an answer from our lawyer first, so probably in two meetings.
They attend every meeting they want, it's, it's part of the time.
So we could attend a few weeks from now as well as a few weeks from now.
I didn't mean it.
And we'll be part of that.
True.
And you can be part of the discussion on the line, and that goes to our attorney, town attorney.
Okay.
Now, Hans, if, if we do this and you get the letter back from the attorney, say a week before the planning board meeting, can you send, or would you send a copy of that to Mrs. Richard? To be, be what they've done, been before it gets here? I will.
Hopefully Jordan will be able to attend, unfortunately, um, he was admitted to.
Oh, he was admitted to the hospital, so.
Uh, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And so this is our son-in-law, so that's why he's here.
You're reading Chris Sonnol.
You're the contractor?
Yes.
I'm gonna walk out with you.
So I look, I look forward to working with you guys. It was nice to meet all of you as well.
Thank you.
We got the house, house, so this guy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good luck with that.
Have some world problems, so we do, we did that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, our next item in the agenda is the application on our, our, alright?
Yeah.
Alright? And the location of this application will be on thirty-first Drive. This is in map forty-five lot thirteen. And the mobile lake is on the Salmon Lake. Uh, the current use of the property is residential. Uh, the proposed construction or change in use is replace existing storage shed eight by ten and two inches with a shed that is, uh, ten by eighteen. Also built, uh, a ten by seventeen mudroom and a ten by thirty pavers walkway. Uh, the system, storage disposal system type of capacity, um, uh, that was in blank, so I guess we don't we don't have a se- uh, sewer system. There's no septic in there, huh?
There's a septic system, yes.
That was left in blank.
Yeah.
Septic, well, to it, because I didn't have access to it.
We have a subway, subway, well, there here.
Yeah. So our place in there, C attachment?
And this system is in what right now?
Yes.
Okay. So present number of rooms is one, bedrooms to be added on this application is zero?
It's just a mudroom.
Yeah, just a mud.
It actually has a lock with a bedroom, when you lock.
So additions will be zero then, huh? We have to add that to the application too. When did you purchase the property within, within the shoreline zone, it was, uh, August twenty-two and three. So that's after the deadline of, uh, November sixth, twenty-eighteen. And there should be a copy of the septic system inspection here. I thought I saw that here. The competition here.
You know, I don't know exactly when a septic system was put in, I, I know the application here showed two thousand. Probably, I thought it was like two thousand twenty-two.
It was twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Um, it, it just.
Before my purchase, that it's, this, I think, was twenty-three, in my wallet.
So the date on the signature of the applicant on the subwater is the seventeenth, so it was probably installed, I mean, two thousand seventeen, so it was probably installed eight, three years later, it was pretty close. Or eighteen, is what she said.
Okay, accepted?
Yeah.
Yeah, Richard signed off on it in June twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah.
So is that when it was put in, you know? Yeah, that's he signed off on it, so Richard had to, could I have wanted to? So that would be during the installation. Yeah, if it was built, put in in twenty-two, uh, I I guess I'm, I question whether we need to have an inspection a year later of a system. Uh, twenty-three now.
Three-year window.
No.
Is there?
I don't know, I really don't know.
I don't feel like I need to, like, try to clear any septic. They're not even adding, like, we don't, there's no, I don't see an added or anything.
Accepted to that, uh, uh, system in the ground one year.
I think it's for all systems that are three years older, maybe the inspection.
Three years or older?
Yeah, if it's less than three years, it's always required.
Okay.
And then on that, uh, a bedroom, I think, right?
I don't know.
No, no, it's just, I'm like.
What, what the, the provision in the law is geared for, if you have an older system, if, when a transfer, property is transferred to somebody else, they wanna make sure that that system is in fact working.
Yeah, but you voted this, right?
Case where the.
We did, we did.
Or you're.
You were living in it just before we bought.
So, so.
This time is a three, three-bedroom design.
Hmm.
And there's only one bedroom.
So there's a change of hats here, that should, should they check it again?
No.
No.
No, no.
So then, the total area is one point six acres.
Correct.
And the lot area within the shoreline, uh, zone is twenty-five thousand square feet. Square footage of unventilated surface within the shoreline zone include all structures, driveways, parkings, walkways, and parties is seven hundred and twenty square feet. Uh, what is the total area of clearing openings of wooded vegetation, square feet is fifteen thousand square feet. The total number of structures on the lot is two, and we have a site plan of that. And present structure square footage is five hundred and forty-four square feet plus a hundred and eighty square feet of deck, which will add up to seven hundred and twenty-four square feet total. which will add up to seven hundred and twenty-four square feet total. That is the present structure. The proposed structure square footage is gonna be a hundred and eighty?
Yeah, okay.
I'm getting that.
I don't get, do you want that to change?
Almost like they're shrinking.
Yeah, no, they're adding the same size to the back, eighteen by ten. So that's a hundred and eighty square feet mudroom in the back of the house. So what's that, the total square foot's gonna be, what, nine hundred and four?
So it's two hundred?
They have written like a hundred and eighty times point oh nine.
That's for the cost of the permit, that's me. That's the price of the permit, nine cents a square foot. So they had to pay sixteen dollars.
I'm glad you qualified that.
So just have to fill that out.
Plus twenty-five, so they paid forty-one, twenty to sit in this room.
So the, the proposed structure square footage is gonna be uh seven twenty-four plus one eighty, which is nine hundred and four.
Yeah. Maybe Mrs. Carey can do that on the application and make it clear initial the, and Hans can do that on the original.
Or the law proposed structure square foot is one eighty. That's what's proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah, just basically cross out the oh nine, sixteen, twenty.
Just the rule, because we're all confused.
So uh proposal just was gonna be added, not the total of it?
Those things.
It would be, yeah. So with that, I will open the floor for discussion.
I have a question. You don't have a three-dimensional drawing or sketch of going, I'm gonna start to the
Last, no, wait. The last page should have a side view. Then I did.
Oh, okay.
Must have been added since the email.
It was, yeah, it was a little bit late coming. It's not gonna be following that out.
Uh, but uh I guess what we want to need is the height of the, from the roof, is that? What is it, what is the height from the roof?
Eight-foot wall, yeah, yeah.
So there, there's an eight-foot wall, but why is the, it told to be uh uh eight feet?
The matter is existing.
Okay.
Yeah, it had a roof, not a pitched roof.
Right.
Okay, it had a roof, uh.
Can't do any of that.
Okay.
So if the sketches to scale your amount, you're finding that video.
So David, I need. That's what I mean.
Everything on the poles, right? So it's probably activated.
So there won't be any entry and sort of service. Um, I have one other question, I think I remember. Uh, the there are ten by thirty-foot pavers. Are they ten by thirty-inch pavers? I, I have a hard time understanding where and what the pavers were doing.
We were doing it from the existing driveway to the new addition as a walkway. It's just like a walkway with papers from the, with the driveway ends.
Driveway to the structure.
Yes.
And that is ten by, ten by thirty, is, is it gonna be ten feet wide?
It doesn't, yeah, I just kind of came up with that as an invention. I guess I didn't finish it when I put it down on paper. But it's allowable, I.
You get a ten by thirty-foot area thinking structure, those states, versus a walkway? The go-out back is a bonus.
Yes. I think the new and proposed addition is right at the hundred-foot mark, the walkway would be from the hundred-foot mark, Matt.
Right. That's case is probably not a good issue, but uh but if looking at the site drawing, it looks like it's forty feet from the water and the new structure is gonna be thirty feet six inches with
I don't think that's.
Here about seventy.
The existing is forty from the.
So, question, your pavers are gonna go from your back door to the fence.
To the driveway, yes.
That's the hundred-foot mark there, so from basically seventy-five to a hundred.
Yeah.
You're gonna have this pavers, which is gonna be like a driveway.
Yes.
So the pavers walkway is basically, because now they're parking behind the hundred-foot line and walking everything in, especially like doing construction, they're backing over the grass. The pavers is gonna be hard surface if they can drive.
It's gonna be used as driveway area?
Probably, yeah.
If you have one, you can, one, if it is, it'll also be stone, like we put around the the other, or it's just the pavers, um or should there also be crushed stone? Because I know we put crushed stone as the area. Or the roof line, anyway, I would have a wondering.
The trip line will have crushed stone.
Yeah, it's not necessary on the pavers, okay.
Is that?
So I'm still trying to dig grass from up far back. So we got, is the existing camp thirty-six, thirty feet six inches, or is the whole thing thirties with the additional ten feet?
Right now, the camp is forty feet from the.
Yeah, I'll make the camp. We got the forty feet, that's to the deck, right?
Yes.
Good.
How long does the camp go?
Um, it should be on the right.
It says thirty feet, six inches.
Yeah.
Where is that?
It's um.
From the front of the deck?
From the front of the camp, not the deck.
You know?
So we're just trying to determine where the back is, this is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, well, like I said, then leave the back.
How?
Highway to the hundred-foot mark with like thirty feet, so it's gotta be it's behind the hundred-foot mark, but the new addition will make it right about half the hundred-foot mark.
You know how, how deep is the deck?
Yeah, do you?
Existing house is thirty foot six inches.
Yeah.
So the deck is like ten feet.
That's ten, that's forty, seventy.
You're eighty and a half feet. Ten four feet up the back, you're at ninety and a half. Plus the overhang. Ninety-four, ninety-two.
So even just that little bit, we're still keeping some of the square footage, right?
Yeah.
I think I might have, regardless of the numbers being thrown around right now, um the, the road and driveway standard says road and driveway shall be setback hundred feet from high water, aren't mine. However, it does say if no other reasonable alternative exists, the road and or driveway setback shall be no less than fifty feet upon clear showing, showing by the applicant that appropriate techniques will be used to prevent seven feet of water. So, um the existing driveway is back and they want to have access to the house. Uh, I think we permitted driveway to the fifty-foot line to get to the house.
Okay.
So I think.
Where it's gonna be like at ninety, like ninety-four, ninety-six feet.
Well, this uh picture here shows the back of the house. It's taken from approximately where the parking area is. And uh as you're looking at this, to the left is a retention pond. Because there's a lot of water runs right down the road into their backyard, and they created a uh fully, you know, retention pond to capture some of that water. So then periodically, especially this wet season we had, driving to the back of the house with supplies, um it is disturbing the soil.
Hmm.
So you run off.
We'll take that.
The paver's gonna protect the soil. And just give it set sedimentation, the pavers will avoid sentiments for pulling and running off.
Now, it's uh, the concept of impermeable surfaces doesn't come here?
I don't.
Well, it's beyond, like, most of us, I'll be honest, so we only have a few feet that's within a hundred feet.
Okay.
But most of it's beyond a hundred feet. So a little bits within a hundred feet isn't gonna set her over the amount, is it?
I'd stop with that, I, I really there's nowhere to fit it in, that will be.
I mean, you should start at six feet from, from the addition and point with a four-foot walkway.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure. Totally be.
Instead of full pavers, just do a little walkway and then the full pavers once you get beyond.
The hundred-foot mark.
Yeah.
Then, totally six foot.
Sure.
Cover it up now. You told about your six-foot one, man?
Well, she has it as ten feet. So uh right now, she's at, what, how many square feet are you at total? So a hundred and eight, so you're at nine hundred, she has plenty of square footage, you have to go right to the camp.
Want to check?
Yes, right now, you're at a nine hundred and four square feet, what's she at, a thousand square feet?
Yeah. Seven hundred thousand.
Yeah. Seventy-five to a hundred.
Hmm.
So she goes four by ten, that's forty feet, we're talking. Because the math to that, she's beyond a hundred feet.
Yeah. Still inside, still inside.
It's still on the, it's a hundred square feet.
The curiosity, in your picture, there's an area with still fence and, and uh it has nothing to do with your application, your proposed building, but I was wondering
Yeah.
what was happening, that you needed, that the still fence was thrown out, you basically redeveloped the area?
We did, we did, the areas, we had bigger stones there and we removed them and we received it.
When you just make it, I'm going.
So we know.
So the deck doesn't count for that? Did they, yeah?
The deck's out, a hundred and eighty square feet, your application.
Yeah, that's with, with the deck.
Yeah?
That's, nevermind.
And none of this involves any tree anymore, what?
There are, um, what trees, I spoke with Hans about.
But that's separate from this project.
Yeah.
That's separate from the project. She's got some, that, you can see the one in the picture here.
Yeah, there's nothing that has to be removed to do this addition or the walkway.
Yeah. My, my concern about this, the ten-foot-wide paver thing is if it's a driveway, driveways are considered structure like the house. And it specifically says driveways are the hundred-foot back.
Yeah.
So Craig's suggestion of having a driveway back from the hundred-foot mark to the house, you make a narrow footpath, not a
That would be.
a full driveway.
And we could use a stone to go between the, you know, driveway and the new addition. Just put a stone, yeah.
About ten-four. So with the paver, if it's not, it appears to be a driveway, you can fit a car on it.
Uh, the thing that a hundred foot setback from there to the house would be a six-foot pathway.
Okay, so just a six-foot path.
Yeah, and you can use your pavers, so you don't have to change.
You can still use those, okay.
Why, you're concerned, huh? So, um uh, within the application complete, with all those changes?
Probably, yeah.
Then should we go to uh the uh finding of facts and conclusion of law?
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Baker?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, we should, should we go now to the conclusion?
I'll check on my questions.
Sure. So within the application complete?
Yes.
Okay, so we should go with the finding of facts and conclusion of law? So, um, this can. We, we raised that from the video, right?
It's really the biggest one.
Yeah, we are gonna worry.
Group perfect.
Oh, so we didn't record anything?
No.
Oh, we're recording audio.
Oh, the video wasn't there? Oh, okay, great. So you were saying.
So pass the paper out, guys, see that?
So uh we will go now through, this takes some time, alright? So bear with us, it's a lot, uh fifteen to twenty minutes, go through this. So we're gonna go through a finding of fact and conclusion of law from the boundary planning board. Uh, the application is for shoreline permit. The applicant name is Carla Casey. The app, the application address is thirty-one Shed Drive, map forty-five lot thirteen. Finding of facts, the applicants on day applied for the application permit for additional mudroom uh to the camp with ten by thirty paper walkway. But we're changing that, when we.
What, we're doing that with the condition?
With conditions, okay, great. The application was presented to the planning board on nine twenty-one, twenty-two-three, and the finding of facts and conclusion of law were developed in conjunction, conjunction consideration of the permit application. Conclusions of law. Based upon the application's materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and all the materials submitted to it, and the above finding of fact, the boundary planning board finds that the target is permitted for use on the section table one in the ordinance, table section fourteen, table one in the ordinance, and further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions in section sixteen D of the ordinance. Will maintain safe and healthy conditions. The board found this standard was approved. Uh, this time was not, was met under, we have a statement for that, the the evidence, the provided evidence.
Public record or?
The public record.
The mission was public record or public record?
The public record and submissions. Which we're gonna uh abbreviate as PRS. So, we're gonna vote. So we think that the standard was met. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Akara?
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And so I would guess as five in favor, none opposed. Will not result in water. Will not result in water pollution, erosion, sedimentation to service waters. The board found the standard was met. Based on PRS. And we will vote. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mrs. Zakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And Miss Sarah Langue also vote yes is five in favor, none opposed. Uh will adequately provide for disposal of all. Waste water. The board found the standard was met. Based on PRRS. And we will vote Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Zakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Alexander and Miss Sarah Langue vote yes is five in favor, none opposed. Will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, bird or other wildlife habitat. The board found the standard was met. Based on PRRS. And we vote Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mrs. Zakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Good.
Mister Alexander. And Sarah Langue vote yes, so five in favor, none opposed. Will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. The board found the standard was met based on PRS. And we vote Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mrs. Zakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Alexander.
Yes.
And Sarah Langue vote yes, five in favor, none opposed. Will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. The board found this was met. Based on PRS. And we vote Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Zakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yeah, yeah.
Mister Alexander and Miss Sarah Langue vote yes too, so five in favor, none opposed. Will avoid problems associated with floodplains, development, and use. The board found this standard was met based on PRS. And we vote Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mrs. Zakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Alexander. And Sarah Langue uh vote yes, and it's five in favor, none opposed. Is in conformance with the provisions of section fifteen line U standards. And there's many of them that we're gonna read here. And decide on them if they are applicable or not first, and then we'll vote at the end. Minimum log standard. That's applicable.
Yeah.
Uh principal and accessory structures.
Yes.
That's applicable. Um campground, NA. Individual private campsites, NA. Commercial industrial uses, NA. Parking areas, NA. That will be applicable, sorry. Uh so parking areas are applicable. Roads and driveways.
You say road and driveways?
Road and the.
Parking lot.
Parking areas.
Oh, let's just. Put NA for the first one and roads and driveways for the second.
Okay, so. Parking areas are NA and roads and drivers is applicable. Correction to the record.
Right.
All right. So signs, NA. Stormwater runoff, applicable. Septic waste disposal system. Like what?
I swear that's.
Nothing I think opposed here that.
Okay, so NA. It's nothing proposed. Essential services. NA. Mineral exploration and attraction. You got gold there?
Pardon?
You got gold?
Yeah, I wish.
NA. Agriculture, NA. Timber harvesting and land management roads, NA. Clearing removal of vegetation or activities other than timber harvesting, NA. Caster trees, storm damaged trees, and dead tree removal, NA. Exception to clearing and vegetation removal requirement, NA. Vegetation requirements, NA. Erosion and sedimentation control. That's applicable. Where she had a drip line, wasn't it?
It's it's. There's no excavation. There is a new roofing system that uh. Could affect. Erosion. That's a matter of using stormwater, you know. Put it on, yeah.
So applicable?
Yeah, it's marginal.
Margin, okay. Shoreline stabilization. NA. Soil. NA. Water quality. NA. Historical and archaeological sites, NA. Resource protection, NA. So now we have. That the standards that are are gonna be met. Based on the evidence and record are the following. Minimum lot uh standards, principal and accessory structures. Uh roads and driveways, stormwater runoff. Uh erosion and sedimentation control, and that will be it. One, two, three, four, five. So uh the board found that these standards were met based on uh evidence and record and and. Uh evidence and record. So we are voting. Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Zakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant.
Oh, yes.
Mister Alexander. And Miss Sarah Langue will vote yes is five in favor, none opposed. All right, conditions of approval needed to meet required. Uh Belgrade SLZ ordinance Finance in section sixteen D. So we have as a as a um standard condition at the time that. Uh manage stormwater runoff. From new and expanded structures. And you have that those drip lines you're gonna do around the camp. In accordance with section fifteen I, we have to read this for the public. Of the Belgrade Shore Sonny Ordinance and Main Department of Environmental Protection. The EP best management practices. As outlined in the conservation practice or homeowner. Uh homeowners publication. Don't we have a link in our website for this? So so if you would like to look into that, I think we have a link in our entire website. Such measures are to be put in place prior to building use. Know that this is a standing condition that applies to all permits unless deemed unnecessary by planning board based on. Irrational, we don't. So um. So we we don't find that unnecessary, it's necessary, so we don't need it, we're rational. Any other conditions of approval?
Uh yes.
We have things.
One thing I'd bring up, Sarah, in the press, we voted on all those uh. Uh. So. Standards thing is separately. Uh. We just wrote on them as a as a blob of. Things of kinds.
So on, we go line by line and on that uh. Uh item eight. We agree. That we just voted as a lump instead of going one by one. And so just because of the.
Pardon me, as long as it's legal, uh.
Um. Because it's one item A, that we've never worthed moving to the bottom. Because we is one question that covered all those items. If we review each item and we know which ones are applicable, which ones are not, and then. We look some the applicable and we, what we're gonna vote on, it should be fine.
I I I'm not opposed to that uh, it's a time and we know what the. The eight items or whatever they were, we voted on.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
You're comfortable with that?
I'm I'm okay with it.
Good. So um then uh do we have any other condition of approval, okay?
I my condition of approval was that. We approved the driveway as a ten by thirty foot. Paver uh. Structure, if you will. Uh down to the hundred foot line, this hundred foot setback line. And from the hundred setback line, foot setback line to the uh house or the entryway. Mudroom, which we just approved, it would be six feet wide. From the hundred foot line to the structure.
Okay, so can you repeat that again slowly? So um. Drive driveway. Is approved. Uh. With the following dimensions.
Can we put dimensions on it behind a hundred feet?
Yeah, I mean, that that's you just started on the hundred and it's all I think.
No, the driveway stops at a hundred feet.
Yeah, right.
And then it carries to six feet.
And I do think it. It pays to have a dimensional width to it, otherwise.
Can we do that beyond a hundred?
Pardon me?
Beyond a hundred feet, we can't do that.
Yes, we can.
Why's that?
Uh because we need to approve a specific project. And who's don't put a dimension on it, they could build a driveway thirty feet wide and there's nothing we could do about it.
Um within a hundred feet. It's gonna be a six foot path.
Right.
What happens past that? They can pave out the right away to the road, can they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they could pave all the way to the location. The issue is if we don't put a um.
Width in it.
Width on there and they build it fifty feet wide all the way up to the road. They could be creating a situation where uh you violate the uh block coverage standard. And we would never know about it, so no one. You'd be violating the block coverage standard.
Twenty percent rule, you mean?
Pardon me?
The twenty percent rule.
Yeah, they get locked up twenty percent rule.
Well, they can't do that. Those rules are in play. Um and they're way under it.
I I.
I'm not into. Putting all these restrictions in more than are necessary.
Um. Once this is settled on our hands, they can do whatever they. And.
Beyond a hundred feet, she has twenty percent of the block, which is. Uh. The forty and twenty sixty, that's.
But the applicant has actually on their application, so it's gonna be thirty feet wide. So we can't approve something different than what the application said, all right?
Okay, so going back here then, so driveway is approved with the following.
You wanna change ten feet to six feet?
So um uh below dimensions. Uh. How you call it, below the hundred foot mark or does that sound?
Within.
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 The walkway.
And. Beyond the hundred foot mark will be no no wider than ten feet.
Ten, uh ten feet, yeah.
Ten feet, yes. Wider.
Are you sure that's with you all, because you can go wider? That's why I don't like this restriction.
I am, you know, it's easy and I just kind of went with. The way the driveway came in now, so.
Because ten feet is pretty narrow.
It is.
When you go fifteen? You say it that way. You don't have to go fifteen, but you know. It don't limit yourself.
If it's okay to change it at this point, I.
You have, you can initial or change it in the mission.
Thank you for bringing that out because I just kind of went with the pathway that we've been. Using to get to the front.
So you want us to put in the conditions of fifteen?
Fifteen, that would be great, thank you.
Sammy would like that better.
Pardon?
Sammy has to do the plowing, right?
Well, we probably won't be plowing, it's only seasonal. But it's nice to be able to get down to the camp without. Treason through the mucky grass and yeah.
So on the original. Water. So how to change the winter supply?
I'll just change it, okay.
Every day.
Excellent.
And I did understand it correctly, it can be paved to them that sixteen, okay.
So driveway is approved with the following dimensions. Within the ten feet mark, the walkway will be no wider than.
Hundred, hundred foot mark.
Within. Within the hundred foot mark.
Oh, I thought you should say.
You should.
I did, I saw. You know, seven thirty, ten. Within the hundred foot mark. The walkway will be not wider than six feet. And beyond the hundred foot mark. The walkway will be not wider than fifty feet. Right? So any other conditions of approval?
Oh, you mentioned the standard condition. What were you told?
The standard condition, just to explain it, is on your addition with a roof line. Uh the drip line from the roof. If you could dig down four to six inches and fill it full of crushed stone, and it just seeps in.
Yes.
And if you wanted to go a step above, you could do all the dip line, but you're not required to, but you are required to.
A little too hard.
That's wonderful, thank you so much. So. Besides, uh based on the above finding of fact and conclusions on law. On nine twenty one twenty twenty three. The town of Belgrade by the board approved by the vote of. So we're gonna vote on the entire application. So uh there have to be a motion to approve the entire application and second.
I make motion to approve the application with the mentioned conditions.
At the end.
So we, any discussion? No? So we're gonna vote Mister Baker.
Yes.
Mister Alexander.
Yes.
Mister Zakara.
Yes.
Mister Sergeant, I just wanna make sure you're good, guys were awake.
Yes.
And Miss Sarah Langue, we, I say yes too, so it's five in favor. None opposed. Five, oh five, the shoreline permit application of. Uh Carla Casey.
Karen.
Karen, okay. So I'm gonna fix this here then. Scary, I we got Casey here and I fix it up. Karen, sorry about that.
You're straight here.
With, thank you, with the above conditions and at the meeting of nine twenty one. Twenty twenty three. Uh developed with the reading uh written findings of facts and conclusion of law. On remand of the Belgrade Board of Appeals and adopted. Uh these findings of nine twenty one twenty twenty three. So you are officially. And so uh we need to do some changes on the application. That that she needs to sign off on them.
See if I can do this a little better this time.
So. Uh so we. We are supposed to scratch up these numbers here, I guess.
Uh just change the ten to fifteen and have her initial.
And.
On the driveway.
On the driveway.
Walkway. Oh, question five.
Question five at the end of it.
Any other?
So can you come, come up here and show, and show that? So we're, we need for this over here and this over here. And I think everything else was fine. And this over here. Like that. So you should initial you like there. And there and here. Wonderful. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yes. And more tables and signs. And most items.
Beyond. So congratulations on your. As me? Do we have to place the, put the conditions here too? Two conditions, sir? Or they need it?
No, I mean, because the finding of facts goes with the application.
Okay.
They stay together.
So should we, should we look at final facts?
Yes, in accordance with the finding of fact.
Thank you. All right. So I guess I answered, we in touch with you for the permit and good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, how, what's your next, yeah?
Oh, no. You gotta beat out more of it. We're like, you know, you need to do what I think, right?
Oh, yeah. I'm waiting to see how you guys.
Okay.
I want to do the same.
Yeah. Thank you.
So we'll move.
Yeah, man, chief votes.
Right.
So we move on to all business. And in that, we're gonna review the four minutes of nine seven. And then also the minutes from the uh, yeah, the side visit for Mr. John's Loscher. What was the date of that one? It was eight twenty-four or something like that? Eight seventeen. Eight seventeen.
Yeah, side visit was conducted on August twenty-fourth.
Thank you. So we're ready to approve. Let's start with the minutes of eight twenty-four.
I'm just having one.
On the side visit?
It's, it's a comedy question, so the, on the last paragraph, is that a French line or a French drain?
I think it's supposed to be French drain.
Is it French drain?
That's when he was tall.
Okay, so it would be French drain. I really don't know the difference. In my mind, in my mind, it would be French line.
Well, it's no big deal. I knew what you meant.
Yeah.
It was one, I know a French drain and I know a French line, but I didn't know a, a French line. So I.
Interesting.
That's all I have here, sir.
Thank you. So on that particular minutes, are we ready to vote?
And Zakara was not spelled correctly. Put that in the book there.
I'm so sorry about that. So Zakara should be spelled S A Z Z R O.
No, Z A C C A R O. I didn't see where it was misspelled though.
I put two, two Rs in there, two Cs. Sorry about that. Z A Z Z A R O.
Z A C C A R O. Yeah, two Cs, one R.
Yes. Any other changes to this minutes? All right. So I want the motion second to approve this minutes.
Yes, yes. Well, the great.
Oh.
Oh, you need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion.
I made motion, we approved the minutes as amended from the August twenty-fourth.
Second?
Oh, actually, I was meant to say, maybe somebody else did make the motion.
I make a motion, we accept it. Minutes from August twenty-fourth, side visit, as amended.
All right, and your second. Okay, Mr. Sakara, second then. Any discussions, any further discussion? I don't hear anybody. So this vote then. Mrs. Zakara?
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Mr. Ryan gets all favors, none opposed, to approve the minutes of eight twenty-four, twenty-three for the side visit to this Loscher application. That's done. Are we ready to approve September seventh minutes? Any changes to that, those minutes, Mr. Baker?
Two comments. Celine Richards was also at that meeting. So we're person, in-person attendees.
So Celine Richards must be added to the in-person attendees?
And on the discussion on Mr. Blockler's application, second line, says the owner agreed to move footprint back to the twenty foot line. I think that should be twenty-five foot line.
I think that was the case, yes. Twenty foot. Good catch. Any other changes?
Yes.
Yeah.
You then? So I want to take a motion to approve the minutes of September seventh.
There's a month and a week, do the minute, the minutes from the meeting of September.
A second?
Yeah, a second.
Thank you. So I have a, a motion and a second. So let's vote Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mrs. Zakara?
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan gets five in favor, none opposed. So the minutes of September seventh are approved. Next item in the agenda is CEO comments.
All right, we got a email from K B Cog about the L D two thousand three grant funding for them. They've been notified that they will receive funding. They don't know how much yet or when it will come. So that's the latest K B Cog. All right, so.
You know, tell about coming out.
So I got.
Right. I thought we mentioned the, the the concept of that you've been getting phone calls with the, for that is related to the same thing.
That was just letting you know.
Okay.
People are waiting, offering at the bed to do something.
Okay.
And already asking questions.
Right.
So.
Um, so as part of that, this process here too, I think we can talk after the agenda, after the meeting is done. Or should we talk about the agenda for next?
You set the agenda now, write down what you'd like to be on there.
So we, we have a list of items on that. So next time, how many applications you expect them will have next time?
That was two.
Two. So let's add just one item from that list. The next.
You wrote that. I don't have the list.
I, I do. I'm right here again. I mean, so for now, let's then, you guys, each one of you have a list of the contacts.
Yes.
All right. And also we have a copy of the next questions. Everybody read that? So we should be, we should be good to send this to a lawyer. From, or actually, we should be, we're ready to have it hands up to, to the town manager about it.
No, you have your own legal budget. My, my important is our legal budget.
Okay.
So you decide the questions or how you, how you want to ask or what you want to ask.
So we, last meeting, we agreed that both questions from the CEO and these questions, because this was initiated by a CEO question. Yeah, and Lorna is the, you know, the, the person that to, to follow the proper channels. And Lorna is your boss. That you should take these questions because you, we have our opinion on it already. And talk to Lorna, see what she wants to do. If she wants to take it to a select board, we will send it from there to the lawyers and but whatever that is decided, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I thought we were just sending this to lawyers.
Directly from us?
Yeah. That's the way it was all laid out right from the beginning.
I spoke to Lorna today and she said, is that your own budget? The question for the attorney asked.
So that's what Lorna said. I haven't heard from her yet. So I'd be happy to do that. I'd be content with that. Send it directly to lawyers if that's the case.
Yeah, so is there any discussion on what I have to add or?
Uh, no problems with, as this, as it is. Right?
If, if I have a total.
And send them down. So if Lorna said then that it was up to us, do that, she didn't need to go and consult that with the select people. I'm good. But I think we all agree with that.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll take care of that. Sounds good.
So here's my final question. What, what type of legal question?
Uh, no idea. All right. I think they say, you're the fee and, and all the questions we can ask with that. It's intention, you're the convention. So I understand.
That's my understanding is that the town has paid an upfront fee. I don't know if that's good for so many hours of their time or that's unlimited, but.
I'm meeting, I'm meeting with Lorna. I can check into that.
I think it's so much is put in every year and built up. But yeah, we come to Lorna, she can verify it.
That's great. So from there, then I, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask first a procedural of that question?
Sure.
We now have two alternates or whatever it's termed under the ordinance. Whatever. When, if we're missing one person, does the voting, is that based on seniority or do we take turns? The, the authority to vote?
I look into that. And suppose the, the chair has the choice on who's gonna be picked.
Really?
And I will have to consult that with Lorna. But in my, in my thinking, it should be based on seniority. So if the two of you are here, it will be you. And if, let's say, we're missing one and you're not here and she's here, then, then it will be Mrs. Morale. So I.
You're thinking ahead like this.
Yeah, the, I, I actually read this from the town of Rowley. That's the way they work with the uh, not necessarily with this board, but if I have the rule of order of rubber, rubber rules of order. So when there is a missing person in the board, in the budget committee there, when there's a person uh, missing, the, in this two alternates, the way it goes is that the chair decides who's gonna be the alternate. Whether I pick you one time or the other, I think it will be more settled because then I have to remember who did it last time. You know, it will have to keep track of that. And how about we have a meeting where I'm not in? And so to, to sell it more for seniority, I would say. And if one of you is missing, then the next person stepping in. So unless the board wanted to do it different, I, I wanted to hear.
I personally, senior.
So.
I said, teaching center.
It was simple, yeah. So if I'm missing or next. So if I'm missing or next year, whoever is the, the president of the board or the, the chair of the board, we have already set that out. But we, I don't think, have you had enough, two alternates before?
Yeah, never since I've been on the board and that's been ten or twelve years, but yeah, first time, we're ready to.
So I'd be accurate, I didn't do that, so.
So when I was an alternate, the listener, another alternate as well?
When I first. I think you were the only alternate. Associate member, we'll just call now.
Associate member.
There was one on the court, you didn't.
Yeah, under our ordinance, it would take, it would take it.
Oh, really?
Okay, although everybody returns to the law.
Alright, so I'm gonna know how I can motion for adjourn.
Okay, second?
I'll second now.
So we vote Mr. Baker?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Sakara, would you see?
Yeah.
Mr. Surgeon?
No.
Oh, alright, that's good, Mr. Alexander. Yeah?
Yes.
You can stay as long as you want.
So what is, what to, we are adjourned.